Thank you. Let's go over the certified election result.
Yes, I have the certification. Ms. Virginia White, 6,866. Mr. Vishal Patel, 6,176. Mr. Anthony Dima, 6,106. Mr. Christopher Lugo, 6,537. Mr. Jingwei Shi, 6,323. And Ms. Anja R. Patel, 6,574. We will now do the administration of oath of office. Ms. White, you are first. And you're just gonna repeat after me. "I, Virginia White..."
"I, Virginia White."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey."
"And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey."
"...and that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"And that I will bear true faith and allegiance..."
"...to the same..."
"To the same."
"...and to the governments established in the United States."
"And to the governments established in the United States."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"Under the authority of the people."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
"I, Virginia White..."
"I, Virginia White."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I possess the qualifications..."
"That I possess the qualifications..."
"...prescribed by law..."
"Prescribed by law."
"...for the office..."
"For the office."
"...of a member..."
"Of a member."
"...of a Board of Education."
"Of the Board of Education."
"...and that I am not..."
"And that I am not..."
"...disqualified..."
"Disqualified."
"...as a voter pursuant to..."
"As a voter pursuant to..."
"RS..."
"RS."
"19..."
"19."
"4..."
"4."
"Dash one."
"Dash one."
"Nor disqualified do..."
"Nor disqualified do..."
"...to conviction..."
"To conviction."
"...of a crime..."
"Of a crime."
"...or offense."
"Or offense."
"Listed..."
"Listed."
"...in NJSA..."
"In NJSA."
"1812-1."
"1812-1."
"...and that I will..."
"And that I will..."
"...faithfully..."
"Faithfully."
"...impartially..."
"Impartially."
"...and justly..."
"And justly."
"...perform all the duties..."
"Perform all the duties..."
"...of the office..."
"Of the office."
"...according to..."
"According to..."
"...the best of my ability."
"The best of my ability."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Mrs. White.
Thank you so much.
Next, Ms. Patel. "I, Anja Patel..." "...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support..."
"That I will support."
"...the Constitution of the United States..."
"The Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey."
"And the Constitution of New Jersey."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"That I will bear true faith."
"...and allegiance..."
"And allegiance."
"...to the same..."
"To the same."
"...and to the governments established..."
"And governments established."
"...in the United States..."
"In the United States."
"...and this state..."
"And this state."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"And the authority of the people."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
"I, Anja..."
"Anjana Patel."
"Anjana Patel."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I possess the qualifications..."
"The qualifications."
"...prescribed by law..."
"Prescribed by law."
"...for office of the mem..." "For office of a member of..."
"For office of a member of..."
"...a Board of Education..."
"Board of Education."
"...and that I am not disqualified..."
"And I'm not disqualified."
"...as a voter pursuant to..."
"As a voter pursuant to..."
"RS..."
"RS."
"19..."
"19."
"4-1."
"4-1."
"Nor disqualified..."
"Nor disqualified."
"...due to a conviction..."
"Due to a conviction."
"...of a crime..."
"Of a crime."
"...or offense..."
"Or offense."
"...listed..."
"Listed."
"...in NJSA..."
"NJSA."
"1812..."
"1812."
"Dash one."
"Dash one."
"...and that I will faithfully..."
"Then I will faithfully."
"...impartially..."
"Impartially."
"...and justly perform all duties..."
"Perform all duties."
"...of the office..."
"Of the office."
"...according to the best of my ability."
"According to best of my ability."
"So help me God." Congratulations. Mr. Lugo. Yeah, absolutely, come on. It's a big moment. You can take a picture. I don't know if you want me to step out of the picture or into the picture. That's great. Okay, Chris?
Right.
"I, Christopher Lugo..."
"I, Christopher Lugo."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the Constitution..."
"That I will support the Constitution."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...and the Constitution..."
"And the Constitution."
"...of the State of New Jersey."
"State of New Jersey."
"...and that I will bear true faith..."
"And that I will bear true faith."
"...and allegiance..."
"And allegiance."
"...to the same..."
"To the same."
"...and to the governments..."
"And to the governments."
"...established in the United States..."
"Established in the United States."
"...and this state..."
"And this state."
"...under the authority of the people..."
"Under the authority of the people."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
"I, Christopher Lugo..."
"I, Christopher Lugo."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I possess the qualifications..."
"That I possess the qualifications."
"...prescribed by law..."
"Prescribed by law."
"...for the office of..."
"For the office of..."
"...member of a Board of Education..."
"Member of a Board of Education."
"...and that I am not disqualified..."
"And that I'm not disqualified."
"...as a voter..."
"Voter."
"...pursuant to RS..."
"Pursuant to RS."
"19..."
"19."
"4..."
"4."
"Dash one."
"Dash one."
"Nor disqualified..."
"Nor disqualified."
"...due to a conviction..."
"Due to a conviction."
"...of a crime or offense..."
"Of a crime or offense."
"...listed in NJSA..."
"Listed in NJSA."
"1812..."
"1812."
"Dash one." "And that I will faithfully..."
"That I will faithfully."
"...impartially..."
"Impartially."
"...and justly perform..."
"And justly perform."
"...all duties of the office..."
"All duties of the office."
"...according to the best of my ability."
"According to the best of my ability."
"So help me God." "So help me God." Congratulations, sir. Before I take role, I just wanna say congratulations to all our new board members. Glad to have you onboard and to all the existing members. I look forward to working with you again over the next year. I will now call roll. Mr. Lugo. And Ms. Anja Patel.
Present.
Mr. Bural Patel.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Present.
Ms. Shannon Pang.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. I will...we did the flag salute, we did, covered that. I'm now gonna read the open public meeting statement. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Public Law 1975 C231 Sunshine Law, copies of this public meeting notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2023. Members of the public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws of the Board and applicable state regulations. The next course of business, we will now call for a nomination for President for President of the Board. Do I have a nomination?
I have a nomination for Beryl Patel for President.
Okay, Mr. Romano dominates Mr. Patel.
Do you...you don't need a second, or?
You don't need a second.
Okay. I'm gonna nominate Mr. Vishal Patel.
Okay. Ms. Pang. Do I have others? Okay, I believe everyone has a ballot in front of them. You can cast your vote, and you can only vote for one of the candidates. Please pass them forward when you're completed. Okay, the first vote. We have a vote from Ms. Anja Patel for Mr. Bural Patel for Board President. Second vote is by Ms. Shannon Pang for Mr. Vishal Patel. Third vote is for Bural Patel. I'm guessing this is by Bural Patel. Next up is by Mr. Joe Romano for Mr. Bural Patel. Next is Mr. Christopher Lugo for Mr. Vishal Patel. Next board member voting is Mr. Vishal Patel for Mr. Vishal Patel. Next vote is Mr. Schneider for Mr. Bural Patel. I'm sorry, the first one was not...when I said it was Bural Patel, that was yours, Ginny, the one that didn't have a name. Because this is...Bural has Bural Patel voting for Bural Patel. And the last is for Bural Patel. There's no name on this one.
I'm guessing that's me.
That has to be Brian, then. Because I have two with no names. Does anybody else not? Because Ms. White, you didn't put your name on it.
I didn't put my name.
Mr. Rivera.
Best of luck on it.
That one's yours, says best of luck.
That's me.
Okay. So Mr. Rivera was for Mr. Patel, Bural Patel.
Best of luck.
Congratulations, Mr. Bural Patel. You're President of the Board of Education.
Thank you, everyone. Now I would like to call for nominations for the Vice President of Edison Board of Education. Any nominations? I would like to nominate Joe Romano for Vice President. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Mr. Vishal Patel.
Okay, any more nominations? All right, that's it. Mr. Thoth, whenever you're ready.
Okay, first vote by Mr. Schneider for Mr. Joe Romano. Next vote by Ms. Shannon Pang for Mr. Vishal Patel. Next vote by Ms. Anja Patel for Mr. Vishal Patel. Next vote by Ms. Virginia White for Mr. Joe Romano. Next vote by Mr. Bural Patel for Mr. Joe Romano. Next vote by Mr. Christopher Lugo for Joe Romano. Next vote by Mr. Vishal Patel for Mr. Vishal Patel. Next vote by Mr. Joe Romano for Mr. Joe Romano. And lastly, Mr. Bural Patel for Mr. Joe Romano. Oh, I'm sorry, that's Brian. Handwriting, 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 buddy. You guys' handwriting looks alike.
Yes, that's Vice Principal handwriting.
Yeah, either that or you're a surgeon, one of the other. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Thoth. Thank you, everyone who got here. It's quite some crowd for the reorg meeting. Thank you to all the board members who supported me. I would like to start with thanking my guru, Prajupramuksumi Maharaj. I come from a background of community service, so I strongly believe in the joy of others lies over all. So that's what I intend to do all the time, whether I was Edison Board of Ed member and being Edison Board of Ed President. I want to give a long speech and lay out the vision and mission and everything because my work speaks for itself, and I did not prepare this. We've got work to do here. We've got a lot of work to do for our district, for our students, and for our parents and teachers and staff members. Only one thing I would like to say. Nobody needs to live in fear. In the past, many people have lived in fear. I have lived in fear. As much as up to walking into this room. From this point on, not a single student, not a single parent, not a single educator, not a single staff member, nobody lives in fear. Edison Board of Ed Education is for the people. And we have a wonderful superintendent, Dr. Eldra Lee, on whom we have a lot of faith to do wonderful things. And good things will happen. Good things are coming on the way. It's already started, and we will do wonderful. I would like to request all by-board members to work with me and Mr. Romano, our Vice President, who is a champion of many good things over the past few years already. So I have a lot of faith in my Vice President, Mr. Romano, and with his partnership, with a strong partnership with him and all the other board members, we will do miracles and we will do wonders. And I have slightest doubt about that. Anyone have any issues? Like I said again, I already call him a rock star. We have one of the best superintendents in the whole state of New Jersey, Dr. Eldra Lee. Reach out to him, and we all are here to help any way we can. The good days start now. That being said, I'll pass it on to Mr. Joe Romano, my partner and Mr. Vice President. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody who came. I'd like to thank the people who voted for me. But I'd really like to thank the people who didn't vote for me because I want to win your trust. See, that's the thing. We're here because of one thing and one thing only. If you go to one of our elementary schools and you see our children walking in hallways with their lunches and their teachers, our elementary students are our future. Everything that we talk about, everything that we did, everything that we will be doing, it's because of our kids. So I just wanna say thank you. Thank you for your help. I'd like to thank Jerry Shi. Thanks, Jerry. I'd like to thank everyone. Shivie, I think you're back there somewhere. Ms. Podowsky, I want to thank you. I want to thank...where is she? Conway, Liz, where you at? Okay. I'd like to thank Alan from the library. Patty, Pat Massey. Councilman A.J. Patel. Councilman Joe Coyle. We have to work together as a team. That's what I am pushing for. That is my goal. So I thank the people who voted for me, and I really want to take and work really hard to get the trust for the people who didn't vote for me. We will do the right thing. Thank you very much. Have a great New Year.
Thank you, Vice President Romano. Next up, we have approval of parliamentary procedures. Mr. Thoth?
Yes. Be it resolved that Edison Township Board of Education and the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to the extent consistent with state law, policies and bylaws of the Board will be guided by Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve parliamentary procedures?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Schneider, Mr. Romano? Role call?
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Anja Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, we have our attorney, Mr. Menj. He's gonna read adoption of state-mended Code of Ethics. Mr. Menj.
Okay. It's a little long, but bear with me, we'll get through it. Whereas Title 18A, colon, 12 dash 24.1, Code of Ethics for School Board Members requires that a board member shall abide by the following Code of Ethics for School Board Members. One, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Two, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Three, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the Board has consulted those who will be affected by them. Four, I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run. Five, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the Board. Six, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends. Seven, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Eight, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer. Nine, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. Ten, I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board members serving the Edison Board of Education acknowledge that they have received a copy of the Code of Ethics for School Board Members and understand the responsibilities they are undertaking as members of the Edison Board of Education. And you'll need a vote on that to accept and adopt, and you all have an acknowledgement in front of you that you will need to sign that you've been read it, have read it, and will abide by it.
Make a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Romano?
Second.
Whoa, that was close. I'm gonna go with Mr. Schneider. Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Anja Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Absolutely.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Everybody's in agreement about ethics. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions. Public comments on resolutions only.
Thank you.
None? But Mr. Thoth, role call?
The...role call?
Resolutions.
Oh, hang on. The public comments, was it open?
Yes.
Just opened and closed, so it's a voice vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor?
All right.
Closed? Okay. So on resolutions, we calling for a motion?
Motion?
Motion.
I don't understand what are we voting on?
It looks like so...
Board meeting dates.
Yeah, board meeting dates, 10A.
Okay, I see.
Yep.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion by Mr. Romano?
Second.
I'll second it. Role call?
Yes.
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Anja Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Bural Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Pang?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yep.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is Board Members Open Discussion. Yes, Brian?
I just want to congratulate our new board members. I wish you guys the best of luck. I think you're gonna enjoy it. It's been a pleasure for myself to actually serve our community. So I think you guys are gonna get a lot out of this, and I'm looking forward to working with both of yous. And also, Happy New Year to everybody out there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Schneider?
I just wanted to say congratulations to you as our new president, and obviously for Joe as our Vice President. I have a lot of faith in you guys, in your leadership. And also, welcome to Chris Anjana and welcome back, Virginia. This is a really exciting time. I think this Board is going to bring a lot of positive energy, and I look forward to continuing all the good work from the last few years. continuing all the good work from the last few years, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to congratulate Anjuna and Lugo as well, and congratulate you, Bureau and Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. White, yes.
I'd like to just congratulate all the, you know, the new people, and, you know, we're looking so forward to working with you. And I'd also like to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve the children and the district of Edison. Just one more time, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I'll just also say congratulations to Chris, Anjuna, Ginny, you know, welcome on board, literally. Congratulations, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Lugo?
Yes, congratulations, President Bureau Patel. Congratulations, Vice President Joe Romano. Thank you for the warm welcome to the board. It's very humbling. And a very big thank you to every single vote that I got from everybody. The most humbling experience of my life, thank you. And I look forward to continuing to keep that trust, as Vice President Joe Romano said. And you actually did say something I was planning and say I was gonna say it anyway, but for all these who didn't, I didn't receive the vote for, I look forward to earning your trust for my three years here. And I look forward to serving the community, the teachers, and most importantly, the students. And I look forward to everybody on the board and have a Happy New Year, everybody.
Mr. Romano?
I think I said it all, but thank you for all of your support. Thank you for the kids. Those kids need it. They need guidance. We're not gonna give guidance, but the parents give the guidance. We just help it along. Thank you for all your support, your never-ending support. Matt? Thank you. Jeff? Thank you. I think I seen Mo. He walked in. Okay, there he is, okay. I just wanted to say thank you again for all the time, all the effort. And everyone else here, I just can't name them all, but you really, really, you make the job work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Romano. So a huge welcome to Mr. Lugo. I have had a conversation with you for hours this week, very pleasant conversation that made me very hopeful that we have a wonderful addition to Board of Ed, and I'm very, very optimistic. So huge welcome and looking forward for great things this year. Anjuna Patel, we had a lot of experiences canvassing together and working together and numerous meetings, and you know what? There are so many people in the town that look forward to your role as a board member. So huge welcome, and you will be a great addition to the board. And Mrs. White, there is no better pleasure than having you back in the board. So thank you so much. And everyone who voted against, thank you. I would like to recognize Councilman Ajay Patel and Councilman Joe Coyle who are here today, so thank you so much for being here. We would like to, you know, develop strong relationship with the town council, so, you know, we can get everything done for our schools. So thank you so much for being here, that's very respectful. Thank you for everyone who attended today. Like I said earlier, we will, we want to do good things here. Today is my son's 10th birthday, and it's, you know, he's a fourth grader at Woodbrook Elementary School, and it's a, no better birthday present that I can give him other than this, so. And a promise I can give him is we look forward to do great things this year. I look forward to do, serve with a lot of integrity, honesty, and hard work. So that's all I can say. Thank you so much.
So I'd like to ask Dr. Alderelli just a few words?
Great. Thank you, Board President Patel. First of all, let me begin by wishing everybody, and hopefully, had a happy and healthy New Year, had the opportunity to spend time with family and friends. And we're ready now to get back in the swing of things as we embark on 2024. Congratulations to Mr. Lugo, Ms. Patel, and Ms. White. We are looking forward to working with you as we, you know, continue to move forward a pretty robust agenda. So I thank you, as always, for your anticipated support, and we look forward to the work ahead. Just a quick little public service announcement about one of the things that I'd really like to highlight, and it's one of the first things that we kind of embarked upon, especially as I began my tenure here in Edison, and that's our strategic planning process. As you may be aware, we are embarking on a strategic planning process. It's actually one of the first things that we did here in Edison Township. It's also one of the Board of Education's goals, is to create a five-to-a-six-year plan that's going to really drive the focus of what we do here in Edison Township. And we could not get this done without soliciting input from our stakeholders, our constituents. That's gonna be students, parents, teachers, all members of our organization to craft goals that are reflective of this community that we can all stand behind and develop a plan to execute those pieces. So we're really looking forward to vision 2030. I believe that's what we're currently calling it, that's gonna be the branding of it. Hard to believe that it's gonna be 2030 at that timeframe, but what I wanted to make everybody aware of, be on the lookout for a survey that's going to be coming out, it's gonna be coming out to parents, teachers. We also have some stakeholder meetings that are gonna be coming up, so you may be getting invitations into those. But one of the things I did want to highlight is we have a couple virtual community sessions, as well as one that's in person. Our first virtual community session is on the 17th. It's gonna be at 7:00 PM. Information will be forthcoming with links on how to get that. And then the following one's gonna be the 18th at 5:00 PM, and then there will be an in-person one at a location to be determined on Monday, the 29th, as we kind of coordinate with building level schedules. We will be able to get all that information out by the end of the week. But if you can mark your calendars for the 17th, 18th, and the 29th, as well as active participation in this survey. I can't tell you enough, your feedback is critical in order to drive the agenda here in Edison Township, so I look forward to everything that all of you have to say, and looking for a large level of participation in that. So with that being said, that closes my comments for tonight, Mr. Patel.
Thank you so much, Dr. Alderelli. So that's the reason I still rock star. It's all good things happening. And all good things are happening because of a lot of work and hard work put in by previous board members. We have over here our previous Board President Jerry Shi, our former Board Vice President Mohin Patel, our former Board Vice President Shiviv Prasad Badukar, Mrs. Conway, a former board member, and Mrs. Bodofsky. Lot of board members, all these years, have put a lot of work into this, and I always say, we don't get paid, we get paid a lot of money over here, that is zero dollars and zero cents. So all these former board members, I would like to recognize them, who have served for years and years and brought us to this stage. So what we have to do is move the progress forward. That's our goal, move the progress forward. So I look forward to work with all the board members to move everything forward that is a result of all the hard work of all the previous administration and the board members. So thank you so much for all your contributions all these years. And I believe there's Library Director, Mr. Romano invited, Ellen Kleiman. So thank you so much for being here. Now I would like to open up for the best part, and, you know, we look forward to this part being the best the whole year, that is the public comments.
Love this.
Yes, Mr. Bowden?
Good evening, Jeff Bowden, 2 Ethel Road, Edison, New Jersey. I was not able to be here at the last meeting, but I would like to just thank Jerry Shi for 10 years of service, you know? Although we never really fought, we didn't always agree totally on everything, but, you know, Jerry was the type to try to move the ball down the field, and no one in this room can say that he didn't do that. And it's up to the people now to move it further down the field, but thank you, Jerry. 10 years of great service. And also Mohin Patel, three years of service. Really didn't get to know Mohin well until pretty much this year, and I found him to be amazing. Once you get to know him, you really understand him, and I know he had a lot to contribute, and he certainly was vocal about what he had to prove. So I thank him for his three years of service, and good luck into whatever you're gonna do in the future. Right. As far as our new board members and existing board members, Ginny, congratulations, second term, that's great. Ms. Patel, congratulations, and Mr. Lugo, congratulations. Look forward to working with the three of you, along with the existing Board of Education. I really believe that the team in place between Mr. Romano, Mr. Patel, is a great team to lead this board. I think it's going to bring everybody together well, and it centers around who really leads this district, which is Dr. Alderelli and his team. And I can say to you, in my 40 years here, it's a big number, 40 years, I've worked with at least nine superintendents or interims, some longer than others, seven of which I worked in a leadership role during the last 20 years. And I can honestly say that we are positioned better than we ever have been with the current superintendent. He just has it with, I know a lot of the union groups really think he's great. I hear great things from parents in the community. I hear great things from staff, and I think he's assembling a great team, and I think he's got a great board here, and I think the future in Edison is very bright for the 17,000 kids and over 110,000 taxpayers and residents. The number, I don't know what exactly is, but it's up there. And I can tell you, based on the number of hirings that are occurring here, we're gonna take over the fifth place again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shi?
Jerry Shi, 9 Inch Court. It's very, feels a little bit different standing over here and announce my address when I come over here, you know? And, you know, Anjuna, Chris, I cut my vacation short so I can be here, watch your, you know, swearing ceremony. My wife is still in Colorado with my daughter. I came here yesterday so I can be here. Congratulations, and I know you a little bit more than Anjuna, and during the campaign, I got to know you guys more. You guys are gonna do well because you're pure. And again, congratulations to Ginny, second term, and, you know, superstar superintendent, right?
Thank you, Mr. Shi.
So wishing the board the best, and, you know, congratulations to Bureau and Joe Romano for in the leadership position, and I hope you guys can take us to the next step. Just a quick question.
The last question.
Asking questions over here. So I look at the meetings, some of them has, you know, caucus meetings, some of them don't. And in the past, we just have all, you know, besides the summer, we have caucus meetings. So what is the rationale behind this? That's it, that's my question.
That's it? Okay. Dr. Alderelli?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Shi. Yeah, we tried to put together a meeting schedule that reflected our practice in comparison to last year. We did cancel quite a few caucus meetings, and there are some months that warrant meetings more often than not, so February, we know is a short month, November, we were off that entire week, I think we were in school like a total of 11 days. The summer months, I know we only have one, and I believe we would probably need two in May, April, and March, so the months that we really need to get that worked on, especially during budget time, we made sure that we reflected in caucus, as well as January for the new Board of Education members. But as always, you know, if meetings need to be added, they can always, the board can always go ahead and call those pieces. But more along the lines of making sure that we're putting out a schedule that reflected our practice.
Thank you. Next for public comments?
Mr. Hyville?
Mrs. Conway?
I'd like to congratulate the board for a new year. Congratulate Mr. Lugo, Ms. Patel, and Ginny. Do a great job, and thank you for taking the position of president and vice president, and I hope and pray that you'll do a fabulous job. I'd like to also thank you, I didn't get to do it last month, but I actually saw the minutes of the committee meetings, and I didn't want to disturb what was going on, so I didn't say anything. So I hope you pursue that. And the only question, I couldn't come up here without complaining about something. I actually agree with Mr. Shi, you're standing there saying that you have an abundant job ahead of you, but there's caucus and action meeting on the same night can be overwhelming. So I know you agreed on it, but there will be times when you, instead of canceling meetings, you may need to add meetings. Now, I also saw in May, there's two meetings, and usually there's three because of the budget hearing plus the caucus and the action meeting. So you might want to think about those items. And the only suggestion that I make is the number-one thing for all of you is to follow the Code of Ethics, because your number-one job always is to not run the district, just to make the district run well. And with our administration, I have no fears that it will run well, and if it doesn't, guess what? I'll be up here letting you know about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Conway, and I absolutely agree with Mr. Shi and Mrs. Conway about the meeting dates, so why don't Dr. Alderelli work on this, and in the next meeting, we set up a final calendar for approval.
Sure.
Next for public comments?
Mr. Patel?
Take a deep breath first. I want to thank everybody, first and foremost. A Happy New Year. Wish you guys a Happy New Year, and congratulations to the new members of the board, Anjuna Patel, Chris Lugo, and Virginia White again. And congratulations to Bureau Patel for the president position and Joe Romano for the vice president position. I see a lot of familiar faces from both parties, right? It's all good to have different political viewpoints. My only, my only wish and just one suggestion for everybody is to keep the politics out of our education system. Our kids deserve us to look out for their best interest. Not our own political gains, not anybody else's, not the township or anybody else, it's for the students, and make sure you put the students first in every decision you guys make. I want to wish you guys great success. I'm sure you guys are gonna do well because you're, you're gonna be stepping into two people's footsteps, which are great, amazing. 10 years of service, three years of service, but, you know, these are big shoes that you guys gotta fill. So I hope you guys are ready for the task, and you fill those shoes properly and make sure that, my size is 11 and 1/2, by the way. So make sure you guys do the best for our students, and that's it. I see there's a lot of politicians here from the township too. Welcome. Stay out of our schools, please. All right? And again, Happy New Year to everybody, parents, students, wish you a great year ahead. And teachers. I love my teachers too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And superstar superintendent, you are amazing, and I'm sure you're gonna be doing a great job with the BA in place. Oh my God. Good job.
Thank you.
I'm bet.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Welcome to everybody. Like everybody smiles, positive direction this year, sure we're going in. I too agree with my previous speakers about the caucus meetings, some of them being canceled, not canceled, combined with the action meetings, only because as a taxpayer and resident, we're really not given time to know what actually is being discussed. And I had noticed this past year when it did happen, a few times that it did happen, the agendas weren't put up in a timely manner. It was like right before the afternoon of that meeting. Are there any bylaws, Mr. President, that say that the agendas have to be posted a certain amount of time prior to the meetings?
That's the only question.
Well, yes, because if there is, can we work a little bit harder or more diligent this year? I know it's a big district, there's lots of things going on to the last minute, but if the public could be notified of the agendas or what's gonna be discussed those nights, being now that there's probably gonna be just one combined meeting. Thank you.
So, Dr. Alderelli?
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, so it's actually part of our policy that would say, I think it's 48 hours, to the extent possible, right?
To the extent possible.
To the extent possible. So there is a little bit of latitude in this, and I will tell you this, listen, I'll take ownership of some of the last-minute pieces that are going on there, with agendas getting out a little bit late over the course of the last year. I will fully own that. But I can assure you now with, you know, a robust committee structure in the beginning, we are switching platforms from e-boards to board docs, which is a little bit more user-friendly. We'll be able to get this information out so that committee meeting minutes, as well as agendas, are presented in a timely fashion. And if you look at some of the months there too, I mean, and I know we can definitely revisit these pieces, the months like October, at the end of the month, we have a Board of Education meeting. We do have school board conventions during that week, so it is tough to have a caucus meeting right there. November, it's difficult to have a caucus meeting as well with the, with the week off and things along those lines. So we did make sure that we looked at some of those months that were the busiest, that we definitely have two meetings within those months. But the ones where we were kind of cramming information in towards the end, we looked to combine those meetings at that time. But as I said, we can always revisit that as a board.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Mr. Patel? Councilman Patel?
First of all, congratulations, Ginny White, you're my favorite person. Great to see you back.
Thank you.
We have two new members, you have big shoes to fill, Chris Lugo, Anjuna Patel, congratulations. I heard the comments very carefully, but before I go there, I would like to congratulate Bureau Patel being the president, and hopefully you can bring the unity and harmony within the different entities of the township, along with Vice President Joe Romano. You all know the politics in Edison, but we are not here for the politics. We cannot operate in isolation. The Board of Ed has to work with the township and also library. These are the three important entities of the town. If we operate in our own isolation, we are not doing the justice to the taxpayers. And that's what I would say, that keep the politics away. We can agree to disagree on many things, but we can't say that don't come to different meetings. I would say that I welcome, in fact, I would request the board to come to the council meetings, put your thoughts together, ask questions to us how we can help you. So it has to be coordination, we need to be working together, not working in isolation. Again, I would like to thank you, Mr. Jerry Shi. I know Jerry Shi, Mohin Patel, Shiviv, and all the board members, you all have the heart and soul to serve the community and the students, no doubt about it. Our way of working might be different, but it has the same goal. It has the same goal. Maybe, again, as I said, like we can agree to disagree on certain things, but when we walk walk in any room, whether it is a council chamber, or it's a library board, or this is the Board, Board of Education meeting, we should have good cordial relationship among us, that we should be able to shake hands, smile. We might disagree, but that should be in back room, not in front of the people. They don't care about the politics within the different entities. What they care is, are they getting back the quality of life, or the education, or the services they deserve? And with that, I would say again, Mr. Bureau Patel, you have, you have said a lot, and I know that you will bring this board together, you will bring the different entities together. Again, thank you for those inspiring words. We have the fantastic superintendent, who is always there to listen. And I would also like to thank Mr. Joe. Thank you. You gave a good speech. You know, you said everything about Joe Bowden, about everyone. Again, it's, again, it's very important that you, you had been to the council meeting, you have spoken about certain things, we listened to you. Same thing, I would, I would request all of you to come together, and let's start working together. And as the superintendent and the board has the vision of the kindergarten or any of those programs, you will need the help from the township, from the county, from the state. Its only way is to shake the hand and not to differ. And I'm a big proponent of working together and making sure that, you know, we do the justice to the people of Edison, that the taxpayers. I will not take much time. Again, thank you. Wish everyone a very happy, healthy, and safe New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bowden. Next for public comments. Matt.
Matt.
Good evening and happy New Year, everyone. Matt Revnack, Vice President of ETA. I'm not going to go into individuals, because I've talked at a few of the other board meetings, thanking certain people. But I just want to say a few things sitting here. As Mr. Bowden said, 40 years, I'm here 36 years. 36 years ago, when I was asked, what do I would like the student teach at Rutgers? The only place I want to come was Edison, J. P. Stevens in particular. And I've been there ever since, 36 years. And there's a reason, because of the great reputation the Edison School System had. I was a graduate of Perth Amboy High School. I was an athlete. I knew and involved with a lot of things, community-wise, et cetera. I knew Middlesex County. I have uncles and relatives that taught in other school districts, and I'll never regret the day I chose Edison and J. P. Stevens in particular. One of the things I do want to mention though, and I really appreciate, is what was mentioned before about the history and honoring some of the people in this room and the predecessors. I've said that for our organization for years. My job as vice president, second vice president before that, and hopefully perhaps future president, is that we do, and what was accomplished and attained for us through our association from our past, our predecessors, and that we improve on it and take it to the next level. You know, you always want to improve on things, no matter how good you are. And we've done that, not only in terms of our organization, but in terms of what we give to the community, to the children of Edison, our fundraising events, our trunk-or-treat and things like that that didn't exist 30 years ago. So we're always out to better the district, better the children of Edison, and you know, obviously better our organization as well. But it's really a pleasure and an honor to hear that you are honoring people that came before you. Sometimes I hear the bickering between board members, or bashing of previous boards or whatever, but we got to the point where we're at because of the efforts that everyone's put in. One person that was recognized tonight again is Mrs. Pang. Thank you for your year of service as president as well. And Doug, you were the year before that. Because they are. I know as being a leader, sometimes it's a thankless job. Sometimes it's a wonderful job to have when you can help people along. But as I've always said, just like Mr. Bowden said, I know I talked to Jerry last meeting, sometimes we weren't always on, you know, the same page with things, but I always honored him for the time and service and commitment you put in. And that includes all the previous board members, you know, that are here. And as far as, you know, again, the current state we're in, we're in a good place. We're getting to a good place. You know, we had a little slide there for a little while, but working with Dr. Alderelli for most of the year now in his capacity, Mr. Toth, and the rest of the administration team, it's really has been great and an honor to work with you guys. And we appreciate it because we feel we're, you're listening to us. For a while there, I said, I remember going to a board meeting like, where's the teacher's input? Staff needs to buy into it. If we buy into it, we have a say in it, we are going to buy into it, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure it works. And I know that's happening. What Dr. Alderelli talked about, the strategic plan was presented to Mr. Bowden and myself right before the holidays. And, you know, we're on board with it. We think it's great. We appreciate the fact we are going to be meeting not only with us as the association, but also the entire staff, the community. You're bringing all the stakeholders together to move this district forward. And I credit, you know, the current board now, the new board, the previous board on doing those things. Because I personally can see a change. I was very critical of that myself. Why are we always left out of things? We are the stakeholders, we're the people in the trenches. And having a former military background, you know, the leadership in the military depends on the people that are in those trenches that, you know, get the work done on a daily basis. So I compliment, I hope you continue on the same path. I'm sure you will. I do congratulate Mr. Patel, Mr. Romano, as being our president and vice president. And again, welcome to the new board members, Mr. Lugo, Ms. Patel, and welcome back, Ms. White. It's always been a pleasure, all the years I've known you. I wish you well. Please cooperate with each other for the best of this district, for the best of the students of this district, for the town, and I'm sure you'll do a great job. Hopefully 2024 will be a great year for all of us. Thank you.
Matt? Matt? You know, you know. Okay. Just curious, I mean, we need bus drivers. Matt? Matt, bus driver? Okay.
Thank you so much, Matt. And I agree with Matt, because these two individuals are on this side, so I forgot to recognize them earlier, Mrs. Pang and Mr. Schneider. By the way, they both warned me what I'm getting into, so full disclosure. Thank you for your services. Any more public comments? Any fast timers? All right. Mr. Shi.
Jerry Shi, I'm Finch. I just want to thank Mrs. Pang for being the board president. You know, last year, a lot of things accomplished, and you know, she put in a lot of effort with both kids, you know, still young. So thank you for that service as well. I didn't want to come back, actually, but you know, since Councilman Ajay Patil said collaboration, I'd like to see collaborations. And, you know, I hope we're not just talking, and we want to see actions. And, you know, action says louder than words. We have the Township Liaison Committee has been working with the township, and we all know that not a lot of things has been achieved, and I hope this year that things will change. Want to see actions. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Next. Mr. Mohin Patel.
You can't just call me out and not say. Thank you. Again, I want to reiterate what Jerry said in regards to Shen Pang as our board president and Joe Romano for our vice president. Last year, you guys did an amazing job as a leadership. Really thanking you for everything that we've done and what we've accomplished. There's a lot of stuff that we accomplished in the last year that is going to be into fruition in the next few years, that you're going to see. The seeds that we planted are going to be bearing the fruit, like we did in the first year of our administration as well. I'd like to also thank the councilmen for coming up here and saying kumbaya and work together. I really appreciate that. But action, like Jerry said, speaks louder than words. Our schools are overcrowded like crazy, and it's thanks to you guys for putting up all these housings and actually giving out a lot of these permits. If you can just work on that, that will do a tremendous job for our students. We won't be having to stuff our students into hallways because you are building 20 apartments or breaking down one house and building five. So if you can please work on that, that would be a tremendous help for us. So that, that's one way we could collaborate. The other thing is, in terms of shared services, the library board hasn't, if you have a parking lot, and you're, you're plowing the roads on, on the township streets, why aren't we plowing the parking lots for the library too? You could save the taxpayers some money, but you don't want to do that because you want triple tax the pairs. So I would like for collaboration and you to think about the taxpayers and our students, and stop overcrowding our schools. That would, that's the tremendous help for us. Thank you.
Any more rebuttals? Saying done, motion to close public comments.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Our next meeting will be Thursday, January 18, 7 o'clock, over here at Ed Center. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Meeting adjourned.